...meeting of the City Council of the City of Aransas Pass, November 5th, 2018 at 6:00 P.M. Let's all rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we come before you with hearts of gratitude, thanking you, my Father, for the blessings that you bestowed upon the city of Aransas Pass. We ask, my Father, that the blessings continue. We ask your guidance upon us, the City Council, for us to do what's right for our city. We ask, my Father, a special blessing for our city manager, our department heads, and what they have done for the city of Aransas Pass. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to go to presentations and proclamations. Come on, Howard.
Okay. What it was is, the first page of this, of Howard Gillespie, County Commissioner, San Francisco County Precinct 4. The first page of this was information I received on September 26th from care regional people, okay? And it kind of outlined what they want to do with the facility. So, they started, they got with a team of experts to complete an extensive, you know, study of what they had. And they are, they want to rebuild this hospital.
Right.
And I reinforced, they reinforced that with me today when we meant to talk about grant writers and things like that, and how to get different grant funding. So, they gave us an executive summary, and I had to sign after this part here, I could share with you, but then I had to do, it took a while to get the attorneys to agree on a confidentiality, non-disclosure agreement that the county was comfortable with, that care region was comfortable with, that I could sign, so I could work with them in more detail as we move on. So, we got that done. They want to repair, replace all the structural elements of the building. They want a repair, replacement of mechanical infrastructure supporting the building. All interior finished, all interior finished out of the portion of the building, they're going to use in Phase 1 operations. Phase 1 operations, they want to bring the emergency room back, they want to bring pharmacy back, radiology and lab, okay? With that, they can do full emergency room services. That is going to be about $15 million. Now, the reason they can do that is because of the fact that the bones of the building are still good. It's all concrete block structure. It was all done with metal, two-by-four, I mean, it wasn't metal framing inside. So, there's no wood framing inside at all. It's already been remediated. And they still need to put on the new roof yet, though, okay? So, so due diligence of Phase 1, they say is going to be roughly $14, $4 million as a comparison of roughly $22.5 million to rebuild the entire hospital. They are committed to do this. And like I said, I reinforced that today when I met with them at 2:00 this afternoon, so we could discuss the grant writers that we selected and talk about them getting their own grant writers. So, and we will work together, but it's best, we're going to do a lot of mitigation in the county, so it's best they have their own grant writers to work towards what they need. So, so Phase 1 operations at Care Regional will be conducted by a nonprofit hospital corporation to facilitate funding for Phase 1 construction. Nonprofit hospital will secure their right to occupy and operate newly rebuilt Phase 1 facilities by entering into long-term ground lease with the owner of the land, Care Holdings LLC. The ground lease will have initial term of 20 years. Nonprofit hospital will hold two 10-year renewal options and rent the ground lease, and rent for the ground lease will be fair market value as determined by periodic appraisal, okay? So, that's what they're going to do. That's the plan, okay? Now, as we all know, plans do well until execution phase, and then things have a tendency to change, but I'm doing the best to hold them to that. Now, if you go into the next pages, we have the hospital survey results, and we held five meetings total. And the breakdown, in Sinton, we had two people show up. In Mathis, we had seven. Portland, three. Ingleside, 49. And oh, Aransas Pass, 61 people were here that night, okay? They had 122 people reached total. There were 117 online responses to the survey, and that produced the survey results that you had before you. And the demographics are there, too. Hopefully, you can read all that well enough. We were having some problems with the printers. And when you get to the second page of the survey, if the hospital were built in San Patricio County, where would be located? Now, there was some consternation about the fact that we put between San Patricio, between Aransas Pass and Gregory, but I let them do the survey, the long-term recovery manager do the survey without my input. Because remember, the thoughts were, for the survey was to rebuild a new hospital at some other location from where the current hospital stands. Part of this was done because of the slowness of the response of the current hospital personnel to answer questions. So, this was done parallel path, so that we could get information from them, but we could also find out where would be a good place to put a brand-new hospital if we had to, and we figured the, out on the bypass somewhere between Aransas Pass and Gregory in that area there, still service the entire area. So, as it was, they came back with their proposal, which is page one. So, and you can see the demographics of that and age, oh, age demographics, let me see here. If you look on the third page of that report, I believe, 65 and over was 39.6 percent, 41 to 64 was 39.8 percent, 26 to 40, 17.2, and then 18 to 25 was, well, it was a wedge, okay? So, but I'll leave that for you to look over. If, the last page of the survey talks about who should run it, and the majority was pretty much Spawn System or HCA Bay Area Medical Center, something like that, okay? So, basically, people want to see the hospital back where it's at, and they want to see it run as a nonprofit. Now, with it being, if they incorporate as a nonprofit, we can have more avenues of getting funding for them through grants, okay? We did talk, we talked about grants today, and the community development block grant people met with us several weeks ago. We brought this up about the hospital, and they said that, you know, they couldn't do like a hospital, they just didn't do that kind of stuff, but if we could bring it around to them as an economic driver for the community, there's a possibility of getting some money from them also, okay? And with that, I'll open it up for questions. That's why I wanted to be on the agenda in case you had any questions, too, so.
Are you looking at any timelines?
Not yet. Timeline is driven by money.
Yep.
All right? We have to be able to, and right now, we just, we just hired on a company from the valley to do our grant writing for the county for mitigation. But we're still trying to figure out how many people will be allowed to pay, how many of those people from that company, two or three, to work with us on it, for the entire county now. And that's mitigation on drainage and a host of other things. And now, Care Regional's got to go out and hire their own company, and like I said, we'll work together, but they should have their own independent grant writers to do that, okay? The timelines are kind of rough to pin down right now, because if we had a source of funding, Councilman Ellis, if you have $15 million laying around loose in your, in your back pocket, we can start tomorrow.
Okay.
All right? It's a little more than making a bake sale, okay? So, yeah. And I know I joke about it, but there's, it's just going to be a long, tedious process, that's why. All right? And I did talk to the lady today that provided the matching funds for the grant for the water tower, and she's willing to help also, okay? So, we'll leave no stone unturned. Other questions?
There's not even a guesstimate. Are you talking three, five, 10 years?
I would say, you know, see, you're going to pin me down to this, you see?
No, I'm not going to pin you down.
You know, I would say that if we can get, if we can find the money within the next six to 12 months, I'm sure 18 months after that, they could probably have something going, 18, 24 months after that. So, you're probably looking at about a three-year period.
About three.
Okay? Because, and the mayor knows construction, you know? I mean, once you got the funding, you got to get the contractor, and then you got to, you could go out for bids for that, and there's a certain amount of time you have to wait. And then, and then you got to, you know, issue the letter to start, and then they got to go, so.
And then they have to show up, like you said.
Yes, that, that has been a problem in the past around here, too, so, yes.
It's over.
Okay? Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. No, we're not, we're not, we're still on this, so I just wanted to let you know, and I wanted to share it with you, but I wanted to wait till I had enough information to share, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to go to presentation of the adopted fiscal year 2018-2019 operating budget.
Let me kick this off, if I may. We want to start the process of officially giving you, and Sandra will have some comments, officially giving you the completed budget, which the mayor and council were actively involved in. It's a good-looking budget and very user-friendly. It's online, of course, but there's some different approaches within this budget that Sandra can talk with you about.
Okay. Good evening. We worked very hard on this budget, as you know, some very hard decisions that you all made for this upcoming fiscal year. The department directors met with Mr. Edwards and myself, my staff, and I put together the budget that you see before you. This is slightly different than we've, we've presented in the past. This has the goals of every department. We contacted the department heads, and they, they gave us what their goals for this upcoming fiscal year are. We've also put what achievements they've accomplished in the past prior year, and the number of staffing per department and each departmental budget accordingly. So, it was a lot of hard work, it's 100 and something pages. So, do you all want, do you all have any questions?
If I can point out that as Sandra pointed, just said, the goals are in there, and quarterly, we're going to be reporting to you on how we're progressing with those goals, so they just don't sit, sit there and collect press. The first report to you is coming up in December, the second meeting in December. So, you'll get several times a year a report on how those goals are progressing, to make sure, we won't get them all, but we should get the vast majority of them, but you'll be hearing the progress on that.
Yes. If you have any, I know it's a lot to process right now to go over. It is online, it's been available online since we, we had the proposed budget, but this is the final version, what was adopted. If, once you've reviewed it and you have any questions that you'd like to ask, my, my door is always open, you know where I'm at, you know how to get ahold of me, or Mr. Edwards, you know his name also. But it's a very comprehensive budget, and we're very proud of it, to be honest with you, so, thank you.
We're going to submit for an award also. It's, it is a very good budget. We'll submit it for an award this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if it's okay, would like to, for you to hear about Bacon Fest. We can do this during the presentation, no action or anything of that sort, but I understand someone is here to talk about the, the results of Bacon Fest. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Council, Mr. Mayor. We are here tonight to present the city, a check for the proceeds for our police and fire department done this year through Bacon Fest in the spirit of Aransas Pass. As you know, that, you know, with Harvey last year, we kind of skipped over. This year, we had to change dates, move around, we made a lot of adjustments. But we had a great team this year that got into it, Dream Team, Reality, Sarah, Stephanie, I can go on and on, but everyone has really stepped up to the plate, knowing that we were behind and got into it. So, this year, we had a blast. The kids had a ball, I think it was even better than two years ago. The, the family activity was great. I, I mean, really, I, I can't say enough for the crew that we had out this year and the volunteers, and next year's going to be bigger and better, is all I can say, with all the support that we have and, and the growing. So, with that being said, I'd like to present the mayor, oop, I lost it. The city, the chief, chief of police and the fire chief, I have a check here for the amount of $6,123.79 that I'd like to present to help them along in their endeavors, and I know it's not a lot of money, but it's, it's money that you all can use to better our community, and that's what the spirit of Aransas Pass is all about, is bettering the spirit, the community involvement in helping our community. So, with that being said...
Thank you. I think this is yours, Chuck.
(laughter)
Thank you.
You forgot to mention too, the champion in the football competition. (laughter) And before I, before I get off tomorrow night, it's our last event of the year, Wednesday night, I'm sorry, we are doing gen out for charity the second time. And annually, we do this event for the food bank here in town to help the needy for Thanksgiving and critical through the holidays, to put food on people's table. Oh, Liz, I didn't see you back there, I'm sorry you stuck in. She's one of the dream team that was out there and really worked hard. So, I invite everyone out to Red Fish Willie's, Spirit of Aransas Pass, Wednesday night, chat out for charity. Come out, we have guests, celebrity, a waiter, the waitresses that are going to be on the floor, we've got some great menu hours, special for this event, and we have to raise money for our local charity food bank, so please come out, uh, Wednesday at six o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five, five o'clock. Thank you all very much.
Okay, now, now we're going to go to the consent agenda. Uh, all of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member so requests. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we're going to go to public hearing, and the public hearing on the City of Aransas Pass 2018-2028 Comprehensive Plan.
Good evening. The resolution before you guys tonight is to accept the documents that have been put together by Grant Works for the Aransas Pass Comprehensive Plan. The City of Aransas Pass was given a grant, was awarded a grant from the Texas Department of Agriculture to fund the study that is, that this resulting document has, uh, the study that resulted in the document before you. This resolution would just accept the work that has been done from Grant Works and city staff. Accepting these documents will help, will close out the grant process and allow the funding to be obligated to Grant Works for, from Texas Department of Agriculture. And so, this is, just to clarify, this is not the adoption of the comprehensive plan tonight, this is the acceptance of the documents that have been worked, that the Grant Works and staff have been working on in the last twelve months. Uh, we will be looking at adopting the comprehensive plan after, uh, the public comment period ended yesterday, and so, after going through and making sure that any of the minor revisions that can be made are done, and putting all the other comments that need to be considered in the future into an additional annex chapter, then at that point, the comprehensive plan will be brought forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then to you guys for formal adoption. So, this resolution just gives, uh, is accepting the documents from Grant Works, and from Grant Works, to talk a little bit more about the comprehensive plan, is Danielle, and so she is going to, and speak to you guys a little bit about what the whole process looked like, and about the plan that, uh, they have submitted, and be able to answer any questions.
Hello, I'm Danielle from Grant Works. As Kat mentioned, I put together just a, a brief presentation to familiarize you with the plan. As you can see, there are two binders over there, we may want to pass those around, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look through them, but what are covered tonight is just a general overview of the components of the plan that's within those two binders, a discussion of the key plan foundations, the plan development process, and then just a quick look at some of the chapter or study sections, and we'll use the housing study as an example. Uh, following that, I'll just touch briefly on next steps for the comprehensive planning process, which Kat just mentioned, and then next steps for the, for the grant process, which we will be handling. So, Aransas Pass's plan has twelve chapters, uh, it's comprised of the plan text, this binder here, a smaller of the two, as well as supporting maps.
She sent it to me and I started printing.
As you can see, in the list here, most of the text chapters correspond to areas of planning intervention, housing, land use, water or wastewater. Uh, we also have a proposed subdivision ordinance and a proposed zoning ordinance, which include amendments that are intended to help achieve the, the goals stipulated in the plan. There's also a standalone funding sources chapter, chapter ten, these are additional funding sources to those that we highlight in each study, which, again, generally more private sources, things of that nature. The second binder, the supporting maps, it's primarily, uh, maps of existing and proposed conditions that correspond to those study chapters, so existing housing conditions, proposed housing conditions, a proposed zoning map, that information. Uh, in addition to the hard copy of the plan, you've received a, a CD with a digital version of the plan. On that CD are all of the files we used to create the plan, the actual text itself, and then a, a digital appendix, which just includes a number of reference materials that you may find helpful moving forward. Uh, as far as plan foundations, there are four, generally speaking, that we rely on. Anticipated population, which is how we expect your city's population to change or not change over the ten-year planning period. Community input, which refers to how residents feel about their community and their goals and aspirations for the future of their city. Current conditions, the kid, the conditions in those areas of planning intervention, housing, land use, so forth. And finally, best practices, and this really just refers to our knowledge as a planning firm of practices that have occurred in cities of a similar size and are facing similar challenges that have proven successful. As far as anticipated growth, Aransas Pass's population has generally increased over the past thirty years, and we anticipate that that growth will continue. The plan projects that Aransas Pass's population will continue to increase over the next ten years, reaching approximately ninety-four hundred residents by 2028. However, this projected growth is dependent on full recovery from Hurricane Harvey and the damage caused by the hurricane, as well as improving the resiliency of your infrastructure and, and housing, all of which are goals that the plan also intends to support. We use several methods for community outreach. Two surveys were made available online, a general survey, which was intended to gather resident input about Aransas Pass's strengths and challenges, as well as focused questions related to the specific planning areas, and a park survey that asked for resident input on common recreational activities, the frequency of visits to local parks, and desired improvements. We also held two public workshops in June of this year. The first workshop documented conversations between community members about their goals and aspirations for the future of Aransas Pass. So, to structure this conversation, we just asked, uh, tables of, of participants to consider what it is that they like about their community, that they would like to see preserved, what it is that maybe you do not yet have in Aransas Pass, but you would like to see develop or developing within the next ten years, what you don't yet have in the city and you'd like to continue to avoid, and maybe some challenges that are existing that you'd like to see eliminated or improved over the ten-year planning period. Input from the community output, outreach efforts is summarized in the first chapter of the text of the plan, the Goals and Objectives Plan, as well as in some materials provided in the digital appendix. Relevant to each chapter, there is a quick summary at the start, uh, this is from the housing chapter, so you can see some of the information that we pulled out, referred to concerns about the condition of housing, a desire for more housing in Aransas Pass and a greater diversity of housing types. As I mentioned, in addition to anticipated growth and community input, findings about current conditions in study areas form another key foundation of our plan, and our primary source for establishing current conditions in Aransas Pass is based on a community survey that we conduct ourselves. So, I believe in March of this year, we visited Aransas Pass for approximately a week, during which time we drove every street in the city and ETJ, and digitally recorded detailed information about various aspects of your city. So, for example, we collected information about the land use of each lot within the city and ETJ. We also noted things like the location type, condition, and occupancy of all of your housing units, and the material condition and width of all of your streets. The community survey is supplemented with additional research, which includes analysis of data from state and national sources, like the US Census, or information from the Texas Workforce Commission, as well as reviewing any previous plans relating either specifically to the City of Aransas Pass or the region. Uh, information about current conditions is summarized in an inventory section of each study within the chapter. By way of example, I just wanted to run through some of our key findings from the inventory for the housing study. As you can see in the pie chart on the screen, based on the community inventory findings, single-family stick-frame housing characterizes the housing stock in Aransas Pass, but with more than seven hundred multifamily units, the city has some variety in terms of housing types, and those multifamily units provide options in terms of location, size, and type. So, units are located throughout the community, they range in size from duplexes to large apartment complexes, they include both market rates and low-income or income-restricted units, and they also provide opportunities for both single, single occupants and families, and to a lesser extent, some options, some ADA accessible options for residents with disabilities. So, this is a very positive finding, certainly one to build on over the remainder of the planning period. As residents will know, that Hurricane Harvey had a big impact on housing conditions in your city, so in addition to the structural damage caused by the hurricane, the combination of moisture and the lack of climate, climate control and the absence of power created a lot of challenges with mold. And so, at the time of our fieldwork, I think many of the multifamily complexes were in the remediation process or finishing it up, um, however, some of the more damaged facilities were still undergoing repairs, so you'll see that in the occupancy numbers. Uh, in addition, um, excuse me, we also found approximately sixty-eight percent of units are in standard housing condition, but that one-third of all housing units in Aransas, in Aransas Pass could be considered to be in substandard housing condition. This means that we qualify them based on external observation as in deteriorated or dilapidated condition, and of particular concern that most of those substandard units were occupied at the time of fieldwork, a little over three-quarters, um, of the units. Uh, in addition to the current community conditions, each study will consider future needs, which are based on anticipated growth. So, for housing, this means that in addition to removing and replacing the currently occupied substandard units that I mentioned, and repairing dilapidated units, we estimate that Aransas Pass will need approximately two-hundred-and-fourteen new housing units over the course of the planning period to accommodate that anticipated growth. And those new units also reflect a, a removal and reconstruction or replacement of the existing vacant dilapidated units in your community. Uh, following the community input and community inventory sections, each study includes an analysis section or a key consideration section. This is an air, this is a section that highlights, uh, areas of intervention and recommended, uh, policies and improvements to undertake over the planning period. It's where we tie together all of the different foundations, community input, current conditions, anticipated needs, and then best practices, if there are relevant ones. For the housing study, uh, we had the following key conditions or key considerations about occupied substandard housing, uh, the need for a greater diversity of housing types, and then just a, a, a suggestion to continue your current, uh, efforts to support fair housing. Uh, following the key considerations chapter or section, each, each study will include an implementation table that will look like the one that you have before you. That is where we summarize the main information from the key considerations section. As you can see, the implementation table consists of general goals and then more specific objectives, which are intended to help you achieve those goals, and for each objective, the plan specifies a general timeline for completion, a lead organization, which is usually the city, and potential funding sources. This is just another goal in a series of objectives from the housing chapter. Uh, I like to stress that comprehensive plans are living documents. Unlike a construction document, comprehensive plan is meant to be flexible, it provides a base from which to engage with changing conditions, but it's also meant to respond and adjust to those changing conditions. As a result, they may require certainly regular review and also possibly updating, which I think Kat mentioned, um, some of the initial steps involved in that process moving forward. I just wanted to add to that, um, to that end, that the City of Aransas Pass is also considering creating a citizen review committee comprised of members of the Planning and Zoning Commission to periodically review the comprehensive plan, um, to make sure that it doesn't sit on the shelf or that it is adjusting to changing conditions in Aransas Pass as you move forward. As far as the grant process, um, the resolution you have before you tonight is the final step on the city's end. What will follow if you, uh, adopt this resolution will be a review by the Texas Department of Agriculture, which is the agency that administers this grant. That process can take two to three months, it's highly variable, um, but upon reviewing and approving the plan, TDA will release the grant funds to the City of Aransas Pass, at which point, Aransas Pass will have a period of time to cut a check for Grant Works for the remainder of the cost of the comprehensive plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's a lot of work.
That's a lot.
A lot.
I think your housing numbers are off, though. Sorry? I think your housing numbers are off of where Aransas Pass is going to grow to, so...
So, this is one of the things that's tricky, projecting population, it's, um, somewhat of an art form, uh, and this is also why plans are, should really, it's more helpful to think of them as living documents, so you know that the plan you have before you is set up to prepare for a population of that size. Um, if you're not certain, if you think it unlikely to reach that population within ten years, well, then you have a foundation that you can continue to build on for a longer period. If you're concerned about more dramatic growth, as you come closer to that number, that's probably the best time to do a more intensive update of your comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for comments.
I'll open the public hearing for the public to speak, voice your opinion. You want to come up to the podium and state your name and address, please?
Hey, trader, I live on Stoddart, we've been flooded a couple times. Uh, I just wanted to say that that was very well done, and, and we appreciate you taking the time on the podium. That's it.
Thank you.
I guess my question is, how long has it been out, uh, to the public?
Drop my pen. It was put online on October twenty-fourth. It's still online, but the public review period did end yesterday, so October twenty-fourth through November the fourth. Um, I will, uh, I would say that any further input that people would want to add, as it, as Danielle mentioned, it's a living document, and so, as, uh, we, we would invite, staff would invite continual input from citizens. That way, whenever we do get to a point at a, it, annual or biannual basis where we're reviewing the comprehensive plan to update it, that we can include that, that public commentary. So, the, the plan will remain online, and we will continue to invite feedback, but, uh, but the public, there's a requirement in the grant process for a public review period, and so, we had to make that available online for that period, but you can think of it as a continuing public review, since it's a living document.
As I was going to say, to go through it, I started reading it, and my goodness, it's going to take me like four weeks to read, to really read it, and I just, you know, skim through it. You know, you've got to really take your time on that, so I'm glad to hear that we're still going to accept the comments from the public on that.
Yes, Danielle.
No? Well, I declare the public clearly closed. And we'll go to, uh, Consider An Act on Resolution Number 2018 dash eight-seven-two of the City Council of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, determining that the 2018 through 2028 Comprehensive Plan prepared in fulfillment of the TX CDBG contract number seven-two-one-zero-six-zero-one-four is suitable to guide future policy decisions, and that the meeting at which the resolution was passed was open to the public as required by law.
I'll make a motion we approve resolution, resolution 2018 dash eight-seven-two.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go to Mr. Gary Edwards. Now, we go to Mr. Gary Edwards, the city manager.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you. The first item is... Let me pull that up. I apologize. Okay. First item, and there's been some developments on this as of a few minutes ago, actually, but I'd like to talk with you about the original intent of this particular legislation and also let you know about the recent development. And indicated to Chuck on this particular item, the sidewalk extending from where it is at the Con Brown Harbor at the park extended around to the fish cleaning station. We have found out, originally, our intention was to ask you to go ahead and approve moving forward with that with the contract. However, found out today that there's a chance, and what the chance is, I cannot tell you at this point. We don't know, and Chuck can talk about it further, that we may get a grant for this, for this cost. But we don't know if we will get the grant. We don't know... We're assuming it would cover the entire cost. We can't say that for sure. It's from a local civic club that is working on this for us. But it is one that would prevent us from having to dip into the budgeted money that we have to cover the park that we're building out there. There is money out there to cover the creation of a park at Harbor Point Park right at the tip there. But if it is... If that grant is approved, we won't have to expend those dollars. If it's not approved, we would have to then have that delay period where we haven't acted on the sidewalk, and we don't like that delay. So, and I have given this some thought since Chuck and I talked about 15 minutes ago to see what your thinking is. I said, Chuck, let's just move forward with the sidewalk. The money is budgeted there, and otherwise, we're going to take a chance that we're going to delay this entire thing, delay the sidewalk. So, Chuck will add to what I'm saying, but that's the question before you. If you agree with your city manager, normally you don't, and we understand that. But is this something you agree with as far as moving forward? Or is this something we wait until the grant is available and take the chance that we're delaying this whole process? Chuck, what have I forgotten on this?
With a summation like that, are you ready to vote? We're talking about the southeast corner of the peninsula, where the park is, and at the southeast corner of that is that bare spot of land, some kind of grass and whatever. You got a fire chief? Primarily, that piece of ground out there is a mud hole. The asphalt makes an abrupt turn and leaves a bare spot of land that our fishing clients tend to park on a lot, especially when it's muddy because it's more fun. And in order not to be stuck, they go ahead and encroach into the grass to park. So, our grass area is reducing all the time, covering a smaller area. We want to bring that sidewalk 320 feet, five feet wide, so that it be ADA compliant. Follow the grass line around to the cleaning table, as Mr. Edwards said. The plan is to, on the inside of that curved sidewalk, once we get it built, asphalt that mud hole, put a base in there to support it, and then asphalt the top of it. On the outside of the sidewalk, till it and replant it with some kind of, I don't know, Bermuda grass or something, and do some landscaping, put some palm trees in, and add some more park benches out there for people to sit on and enjoy the scenery as well as fish from. Now, I am not a landscaper. I made contact today with Ms. Pam Larson with the Bye County Master Gardeners Group. We'll be out there later this week for her to look at that area and begin thinking of what kind of palm trees and what else might look good out there and put together a drawing and a plan to give me some guidance in what to do. But we need to do something about a sidewalk. That's pretty much our starting place. I have received four bids, and I think you have them before you. The low bid from Eddie Jenkins out of Ingleside is $9,076. The high end was $14,825. The Lions Club grant program, I got the word from Mr. Sherman King today that they have approved the ballfield scoreboards. The documents saying that it's been approved are not in hand yet. They're waiting on some big lions to sign off on it, but it's been voted on. It has had final approval. But they have not yet submitted the grant request that I put forward to them for work down at the harbor that included the sidewalk. So, I thought, well, that's great. We can build a sidewalk. We've got a firm price. The weather's suitable, and if we get the grant, it'll help pay for it. And I was informed that's not correct, that they will not reimburse us for money that's already spent. So, that's what I talked to Gary about shortly before the meeting. I need some guidance. We need some guidance from council. Shall we proceed and get off dead center and do something down there, as you had indicated in our planning period before the budget was put together? Or shall we wait and see if we get a grant approval from the Lions Club, which would pay for this? And I was also informed, they have their own people that bid on the project, and our cost is probably lower than what their cost would be to go with their contractor. That doesn't bother me. If they're paying for it, that's fine. But it took about three to four months talking with Fernando before they made action on the Little League proposal. So, we're looking at probably another three or four months before we get word on whether we're going to get this. Mr. King said, if we want to go ahead and proceed, they'll just scrub the sidewalk off of our request and deal with the rest of the request. So, I thought, well, I might hit the lotto, and I'll pay for the dirt sidewalk myself if I get a billion dollars. How long do we wait? That's my question for you. And I'll answer any questions you have, but we're looking for some guidance. Do you wish us to move forward, or do you wish us to wait?
My opinion is to move forward.
Yeah. Go.
We have the money?
It is in the budget.
We'd budget it.
It is budgeted, and it's the most heavily traveled, trafficked park that we have in the city. It was our highest priority when we did some workshops about it. That's my opinion.
Could we go back to the Lions Club? And Gary, I had spoken to you about a sidewalk from Hogan Homes to the school. Do you think they would be, if we took this off the plate, that they might consider doing sidewalk for the Hogan Homes to the school?
We're already talking with the state about that.
Oh, good.
And the state in January will let us know about the availability of those. They'll be available, but we can't apply for them until January.
What about for one that starts from the end of the one that they did along Wheeler to end up all the way at Walmart, the sidewalk? You know how they did the sidewalk all the way down Wheeler and then it stops by the bowling alley or before that?
Oh, yeah, okay.
To continue that sidewalk all the way down to Walmart?
That's...
Because there's a lot of people that walk down that road.
I assume that's something we can ask. I don't know, Chuck. Is that...
I have no knowledge of what else they might cover. We were asked by Mr. King what they might consider doing at the park. That's all the knowledge I have.
Another possibility is, and as you know, we have the EDA grant, and I don't know if there'll be enough to cover a sidewalk from downtown to Con Brown. And that may be another possibility also, and it's in the same general area. It makes that connection also. Why don't we... If the council... I'm hearing the council say you would like to move forward.
Yes.
If we can move forward, and then in the meantime, Chuck and I will work on other possibilities as far as a sidewalk goes. And we can bring that back to the council once we come up with some options, see which one you want to do.
Thank you, council. Mayor.
Favor of the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve the sidewalk at Con Brown Harbor to double E construction out of Ingleside for $9,076.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor and council, the next item is an issue that the mayor and I worked on some time ago. We went to Port A, I think it was. Received a congratulatory letter from GLO several days ago, fairly recently. In that congratulatory letter, they said, congratulations, you are eligible to receive $10 million plus for infrastructure work. You are also eligible to receive, it's like 2.5 million, for buyout work also, and for a total of about $13 million. Has to be eligible. And you, some time ago, agreed to hire Grant Works to help us apply for those, go through an application process, which... And we've met with them already. I'm intrigued about the hospital, is that possibility there also, listening to what was said earlier. Don't know if that is an option or not, but we will... Something we can look at. Yes. So, anyway, the reason for this being on the agenda tonight is had to tell GLO that, yes, we would like to move forward with those dollars. And calling them up and said, it's on the agenda for tonight. And they said, well, that pretty well covers it, but probably would be a good idea if your council were to sign off on that also. That's the reason it's before you. All you're approving is, if you agree, is to say, yes, we're interested in those $13 million for infrastructure work, and then I will send them the language in the minutes, and that's all that they need. And then, we start the application process, and there's a deadline for that. The deadline for this is November 30th, what you're doing. The next deadline is like January 1st, end of December, and they may extend that. So, I just need your okay that we want to move forward with it, if in fact, you do want to move forward with it.
I want to think about it. No, I'm kidding.
Was also thinking that this would be a great source for drainage. Because it's related directly to infrastructure, and we can at least... And I've not talked with Fernando in great detail about this, but that may be a good source for at least some of the drainage issues. And FEMA is... We're already asking for some FEMA dollars on the infrastructure, the drainage problems created by Harvey. And if you put those two together, it could address a number of our issues, assuming that qualifies, and we haven't had that meeting yet. And there's another issue coming up later in the meeting that one or two of you were asking if you'll be sent on a committee to decide what we're going to apply for. So, anyway, before you is, do we want to move forward?
Make a motion we move forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item, Mr. Mayor and council, is... That's where we are with the CDBG Disaster Recovery Review Committee. Important to have input from an elected official. Would like one, or if you want two, that would keep us within the open meetings requirement. One is fine, but that's up to you, to sit in on those meetings and decide how we're going to spend those dollars and working with Grant Works with what may end up being a very tight deadline. So, that's the question, and that's the issue related to this legislation.
I think I'm the only one unemployed here, right? So, I...
Yeah, pretty much.
What time of day are these meetings?
That's to be determined by the committee. I don't know. I don't know.
I'm okay.
In the evenings, I'm good going in the evenings, but I can't make it in the day.
Okay, well, guess we... Vicki?
Do we make a motion, or do we just...
You need to name one or at the most two. Me, as the city attorney. Roxanne, if we were to do two people, does that create any problems as far as open meetings?
No, sir.
Okay. So, you can do... Can't do any more than that, or you shouldn't do any more than that. But two people will be fine.
Billy and Vicki?
Need an answer.
Well, Billy said he would like to do it if the meetings were in the evening. If he can't do it, I would be happy to do it during the day.
Okay.
So...
And it may be a situation where maybe one meeting and then another, because I anticipate several meetings on this. So, okay. We'll take those three names then, if you want to bring those forward, and we will act accordingly.
That may create a quorum issue, a walking quorum issue, so we can't have...
I'm sorry.
That may create a walking quorum issue under the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Thank you.
So, we really just need, at the max, two that would be assigned.
Okay. Thank you.
With no alternate.
Jan, it'd probably be a lot easier for you to make meetings.
Yeah, I can make daytime meetings.
A lot of them are during the day where I'm on that island all day.
My husband's rolling his eyes, but I can make meetings during the day.
So, is that the answer then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We would do it as a form of a motion.
Okay, well, I make a motion we appoint Jan Moore and Vicky Breggo to the Disaster Review Committee.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, that's all we have from the city manager section of the agenda.
Now, we're going to go to Community Enrichment. And we're going to go to Consider An Act on Approving Change Order Number... Change Order Two with Large and Construction for Repairs at the Civic Center.
I think we are... I don't see her here. We're asking that both items be tabled for now. There's been some last-minute developments. So, number two, change order number two, and change order number three, we're asking that you table for now. And we'll bring it back to you.
Make a motion that we table change order number two and number three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go to Development Services, which is Consider An Act on Issuance of a Request for Proposal for King Lift Station Repairs. Fernando?
Good evening, mayor and council. What we have before you here is King Lift Station over on our north side. It's the wet well itself is in bad disrepair. We've got water infiltrating already to the sites, and that's causing a lot of flooding through our system because of stormwater coming in. We're at the point that we need to repair it by lining it up and doing some work inside. We do have money allocated in our budget for this, and we just want to get permission to go out and get some bids to see what the numbers look like.
Will this be FEMA reimburse?
No.
I'll make a motion that we go out for RFPs for the King Lift Station repairs.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go to Consider An Act on the Issuance of a Request for Proposal for New Roads and Beasley Water Lines.
All right, this is another project also that we've had in our books from bond monies. We've done the Highland and Johnson Water Sewer Project. This is the next phase, which is the water, and then shortly after will be the sewer. Engineers have the plans for the water specs completed. I've already reviewed them several times. We've gone back and forth, and we've made all the adjustments we needed. We're at the point where we're ready to go out and start getting bids on it. Right now, based on the engineer's estimates, we are under budget what we had predicted, so we want to go out and get some bids and see what the final numbers look like.
I'll make a motion that we go out for RFPs for New Roads and Beasley Water Line Project.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go to Consider An Act on Issuance of a Request for Qualifications for Engineering Services for a Citywide Drainage Study.
And this final one here, as we discussed with all the issues we're having with our storm infrastructure and our outdated drainage plan, we will let you go out and get some qualifications and see what comes in to hire someone to do... qualifications and see what comes in to hire someone to do a new infrastructure assessment, and determine whether what we have, what condition it's in, if it needs to be upsized or the current sizing is correct, and see what other options we have for all of us to try to help our current situation we're in. The last one that was done was in nineteen eighty-three, and there hasn't been any upgrades or any additions to our systems since then, and we've had a lot of development in the city, which is now affecting our current situation. So we're at a point we desperately need a drainage plan, this is just going out to get some qualifications, and then we'll bring it back to council for recommendation after that.
I'll make a motion, we authorize staff to publish a RFQ for engineering services for citywide drainage study.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we go to consider an act on creating the comprehensive plan at HOC Review Committee to be compromised of the Planning and Zoning Commission members.
Typically, a comprehensive plan is, the recommending body, the Planning and Zoning Commission, is pointed to oversee the progress of the comprehensive plan. This would make it official. It's a step toward trying to prevent our comprehensive plan from becoming what they call POTS, a plan on the shelf. We don't want it to sit and gather dust, we want to be sure that we have a continual revisions, continual insight into this plan. And so this would formally put the charge, the Planning and Zoning Commission, with reviewing it. And as the body that deals with planning and the zoning issues, interferences past the most, they are the most aware of the development issues, the development concerns or questions that would be coming up. So that's, that is why this action is before you.
I know you've stated that they're, Planning and Zoning Commission are the ones to review or keep the file, looking at it. How often are they going to review it? Is it going to be every six months? Is it going to be a part of it that they're going to review at a regular meeting, every two months? How is it going to be kept alive by them?
Well, and that's something that we will have to formalize and decide. I think that, based on discussions that the city manager and I've had, that we would be looking at hopefully a quarterly, at least looking at the plan, whether or not it would be incorporated into the regular planning and zoning meetings. That would be something that we would want to have the commission's input on, to make sure that everyone was available, and that we were able to continue the, that the meetings would have value. But we'll basically have, what we're intending to have when we adopt the plan, is a chapter that is an annex or additional, that we will be putting public commentary into it, into the plan. And the intention would be, whenever we do review it, whether it be quarterly or biannually, to take that chapter, to incorporate any new comments that we have from the public into it, and to review whether or not the public comments that have been added need to be further implemented into the document. But, so it just, it really depends on, once we have the comprehensive plan adopted, what the Planning and Zoning Commission, what we feel like is the best path for making sure, how often we need to meet to review it. I believe that typically, either quarterly or biannually would be the, more than, above and beyond what most cities would do with their comprehensive plan, but we want to be sure to do so. So, but if there's a recommendation from council, I'm sure that the commission would be happy to hear.
I just, that was just a lot of talking in circles to me.
Yeah. No, the basic answer is, we don't know yet. But the different options are either quarterly or biannual, there's options for it, but we haven't decided.
My concern is that it's going to just sit there for a while, and nobody ever look at it, and it's going to become another file on the shelf.
Yep, and that's what we're turning forward.
And that's, you know, like every six months, I would say, you know, starting out, I don't know, are they familiar with it? Have they looked at it?
Yes.
Have they had, you know, I just don't want it to sit there. Maybe every three months, maybe to get started. I just want someone to start reviewing it.
I would say at the minimum, six months, because this is, will be our first year to have it, that we would probably be looking at somewhere closer to the three months, or the, yeah, three months. But again, I apologize, I do not know a hundred percent what the schedule will be like.
Okay, can you let us know?
Absolutely.
Keep us informed of what decision, if it's going to be a year to review, that's too long?
Oh, yeah, no, that's, and that's definitely, like I said, at a minimum would be every six months, but what we're looking at for the first year, especially as we're trying to implement the comprehensive plan, because as you see, it's a big document, and so there's a lot of suggestions that have been made for the zoning ordinances, subdivision ordinances, and all of that will have to go through Planning and Zoning and through city council. And so what we're going to be looking at is how to establish a process where we're implementing, but also going back and reviewing our progress, and making sure we're keeping on track. So it's a, it is a task, and I apologize, I do not have a timeframe at the moment, but at the least, every six months, but more than that, mostly.
The way I've seen this done before, and normally, cities don't do this, this is a step beyond to make sure it doesn't sit on the shelf. But there's a subcommittee of Planning and Zoning that's set up to report on whatever time period we talk about, agree to, to report back to P and Z on what their findings are, and moving forward with different elements of the plan, and how they're going to divide up those responsibilities. But as general, what I've seen anyway, it's a subcommittee of P and Z to report to the full committee, that will report to you on what is decided, if, on different actions that may be necessary in moving forward with different elements of the plan. But that's one approach we could take.
And so with this action, we'll be able to establish the ad hoc committee, and then at that point, get a better idea of what the availability of commissioners are, and what their input is, as far as how often they would want to review it to report back.
Favor of the council? Well, I make a motion, we approve the creation of an ad hoc committee to oversee the comprehensive plan.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we go to updates on LWR Building Asbestos Removal.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is just an update, we got our results back on asbestos testing, and it was way more than I expected. The asbestos is in the floor tile, it's in the ceiling tile, it's even in the drywall, in the mud. So, I've taken a few approaches here on getting some pricing back. The best that I can come up with for demolition and asbestos remediation is forty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Believe that the city manager would like us to move forward, and we just wanted to give you an update on the progress that we're making on the LWR building.
Doesn't surprise me, but all that asbestos in there, it's an old building.
It's every, I'm not going to say every inch, but every square foot of it's got it.
Mayor, as the city attorney may speak.
Sure.
Thank you, mayor. As your city attorney, you have instructed me to work with the city officials and the administration regarding demolitions. This is one of our top priority properties. It is an open structure. While the amount of money to remove the asbestos and demolish the structure seems large, I would say that the public health and safety hazard of that building in its current condition, and the people being able just to walk in and breathe and handle that open asbestos in itself, is worth the amount of money that will be required to bring it down. As you recall, this property is owned by all the taxing entities.
And Aransas Pass is solely responsible for demolishing, are we going to get any reimbursement from the taxing entities?
We're going to do our best, it's, the way I understand it from Chief Blanchard, the drug fund could possibly reimburse us.
Crime board?
Crime board. The crime board could possibly reimburse us. We have to do our due diligence and keep all of the receipts, it's something that we'd have to pay for upfront out of demolition budget.
We did run, we did run nine-one-one calls to that particular property, I do not recall off the top of my head what the number of calls were, do you recall that?
I don't recall what they are. I get them confused with one of them out at the harbor.
Number of calls were for emergency responses, if you remember that presentation in the demolition PowerPoint, was significant enough to be able to warrant seeking help from the crime prevention board.
And don't hold me to this, I don't know if it was that one or the one out at Con Brown Harbor, one of those numbers was like sixty-seven thousand dollars for EMS, police calls, fire.
There's no action, I think. This is just, this is just an update.
Keep you apprised of where we're at.
I just, you know, think...
Just an update.
Strongly approach the other taxing entities to do their part also.
Okay. Thank you.
I was thinking of the county. Oh, the county's a great idea! We want more than a dollar, okay?
Or one mile.
I'm Auguste County Commissioner, San Francisco County Precinct Four. If you recall, it was rather pressing that we get approval through the county to allow the City of Aransas Pass to take this action at no cost to the county.
That is correct.
Once again, slip three.
We'll keep trying, though. Okay, now...
We actually sought permission to demolish it from the county and the other taxing entities, and they provided us the approval with no cost.
Of course they would, with no dollars.
Well...
Go ahead.
But nobody's demolished it for years.
Okay, now we go to public safety, and we go to consider an act on approving the fire chief to receive a transfer of laptop computers from Gulf South Pipeline Company LP.
So this is very similar to a grant that we did about four months ago, where we got some laptop computers from them. They bring them in, they're recognized computers, David Alt Walter gets ahold of them and does computer magic to them, makes them good stuff for us to use out in the field, and stuff like that. So we're just seeking your approval to accept that, and be able to go forward with that.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Thank you. Roxanne Pies-Cutroneo, your city attorney.
Chief, I just want to point you on the spot.
Oh, great.
You know, we do law enforcement together, you just do it differently than I do, I just do it in the courtroom. However, with that said, we could use one of those laptops in the courtroom, our judge has been working very seriously to create efficiency, and we're working towards paperlessness, and we've got the system to be able to figure out how to do that, we just need a laptop, that takes six minutes. So if you're able to give us one, to help with law enforcement and prosecution of those cases, we'd be more than happy to accept it.
I say no to that.
You're on your spot, Mayor.
Do we put that on this?
Yeah, we can dedicate one of these computers to that.
Here we go. Who's the favor of the council?
Well, I make a motion that we allow fire chief to receive a transfer of laptop computers from the Gulf South Pipeline Company LP, and one to be used by our judge in the courtroom.
Oh, are you going to do this discretion, which way?
He hasn't said yes. He's just looking around. How many is it?
I think it's twelve this time.
Oh, you only need eleven.
They're free.
They're free? Okay, well, who seconded it?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're going to go back to the fire chief on considering an act on approving the fire chief to accept a grant in the amount of fifty-three hundred dollars from Flint Hills Resources Helping Heroes Program.
So about annually, Flint Hills Resources allows different local fire departments to put in for the Helping Heroes Grant, and that grant usually goes out to help fire departments purchase equipment, and stuff like that. And we put in for, and we were accepted to get the grant, up to fifty-three hundred dollars. And so we're really happy about that, and so we're really hoping that you'll allow us to go forward with that as well.
You got, you got left?
It'll make up for that one computer.
Everything but the one computer.
Oh, and there's one thing, and one thing... Hit him up, Roxanne.
What do you want now, Roxanne?
No, you can't speak.
Our support needs a roof.
All right, wait, 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 wait. Fire department also needs it.
Thank you for being a hero, chief.
Well, I make a motion that we allow our fire chief to accept a grant for five thousand three hundred dollars from Helping Hands Flint Hills Grant, and he doesn't have to share that with the court.
I second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now we go to city council or staff announcement, and can I do the first one?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to have the Fall Feast, November fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, and it'll be at the civic center, and it's a turkey dinner for whoever shows up, and it's all free.
By the time, from what hour?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock till it's over. And if any of y'all would like to volunteer debone turkeys, portion out the cranberry sauce, peeled potatoes, peeled carrots...
May I like to volunteer to eat that stuff?
You need it afterwards. But anyway, that's what we're doing on November fifteenth, okay? And it starts on Tuesday. Tuesday, we prep the turkeys, Wednesday, we cook the turkeys, Wednesday, we debone the turkeys, and Thursday, we serve them out.
Are we doing it for how long?
Uh, a lot. I think it's, what, four years, five years? But anyway, Gary will do the last two.
Quickly, before we get to the trunk or treat, just, it's already been said, but the website, or the comprehensive plans on the city website, so we just want to make you aware of that, and Fernando?
He's got a big smile. He sure does.
All right, give you a quick update on our trunk or treat, we had a successful year. Year one, we started over a community park, we did twenty-three vehicles, had a good turnout. Last year, we had a motor at Con Brown Harbor, because Harvey put a dent in our plans, and they used our shimpery grounds for the debris, which turned out better, because we have better management of people in and out, and so forth. This year, well, last year, we ended up with thirty-one vehicles, and this year, we ended up with sixty-three vehicles.
Wow!
And that's because we capped the amount of vehicles at sixty-five. We had capped it at sixty-five, even though we were still getting calls, people wanting to participate, it's just, for logistics, we capped it at sixty-five, and we ended up with sixty-three. We counted seven hundred kids roughly that came through, and about a thousand, two hundred, a thousand, three hundred adults, so about twenty-one hundred individuals that made it through. We give out approximately thirty thousand candy to kids, so it was a very, very successful event, and the best part about it, it didn't cost us a single penny. Everything was donated to us by our residents, by community businesses, and then some of our companies that we do business with, we're very grateful to donate. Lowe's gave us all our inflatables for the hayrides, and very grateful for HEB and all the other businesses that donated, so we appreciate it, and next year, we're hoping to have even more vehicles. Thank you.
Okay, so now we go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for matters that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits city councils from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, advise that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Okay. Cool. Now, we're going to go to section, section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one of the Texas Open Meeting Act, to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter in which it's duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Board of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act relating to, number one, Con Brown Harbor Lease Coast Point Company, number two, City of Aransas Pass versus Jim Davidson LTD RLI Insurance Company and Naismith Engineering, cost number S dash fourteen dash six-two-seven-eight dash C V dash C in the three hundred forty-third Judicial District Court in San Patricia County, Texas. Then number three, we're going to go to Daniel Jimenez and Paul Harris versus City of Aransas Pass, cost number S dash fifteen dash six-zero-five-nine dash C V dash C in the Thirteenth Court of Appeals. Then number four, we're going to go to annexation of... Then number four, we're gonna go to annexation of face one, face two of Hogan Homes. And then we go to number five, industrial district agreement, number eight, between the city and Gulf Marine Fabricators, LP, for a term beginning January first, two thousand sixteen, and continuing on till December thirty-first, two thousand thirty. Then, we'll go to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four of the Texas Open Meeting Act to deliberate the evaluation. Uh, how you doing, Gary? The city manager. And, uh, here we go, we shall return. Hello, what?
The time is seven fifteen.
Oh, yeah, seven fifty, seven fifteen. Okay?
Okay. Here we go. On on. Okay, here we go. We're gonna reconvene, open meeting at uh seven fifty-four. So now um Billy knows what to do.
Okay. I make a motion to assign industrial district agreement number eight, North Yard from Gulf Marine Fabricators LP to Berry Contracting LP. A Texas Limited Partnership DBA Bay Limited to be known as Industrial District Agreement Number Eight. Eight A, okay. Ooh, oh you scratched out the A, okay. Eight A, eight A.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I make a motion that we give Gary Edwards a two percent increase. And I'd like to say he has done a fabulous job and we are very lucky to have him on.
Okay, here we go. We're gonna reconvene, open meeting at, uh, 7:54. So now, um, Billy knows what to do.
Okay. I make a motion to assign industrial district agreement number eight, North Yard from Gulf Marine Fabricators LP to Berry Contracting LP. A Texas Limited Partnership DBA Bay Limited to be known as Industrial District Agreement Number Eight. Eight A, okay. Ooh, oh, he scratched out the A, okay. Eight A, eight A.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm making motion assigning industrial district number eight, South Yard from Gulf Marine Fabricators LP to South Texas Gateway Terminal LLC to be known as Industrial Agreement Eight B.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have one more motion I gotta think of.
Yes, one more motion, do we need to make the motion that we give Gary the same two percent increase?
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we give city manager Gary Edwards a two percent increase.
Just like all the other?
Like all the other employees. And I'd like to say he has done a fabulous job and we are very lucky to have him on our team.
Yes, sir.
And don't go anywhere anytime soon, please.
We hope you don't tell your boss.
Thank you very much. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, I'm making motion we adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much.